Mine's six twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You watch it all?
All right.
Uh, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get this meeting called to order here at six thirty. If you'd like to join us, please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is amendments to the agenda. Do we have any this evening?
Uh, Mrs. Cherry, the administration have no amendments to offer. Thank you.
Mrs. Cherry, I would request that we amend the agenda to include a review or discussion of School Board Policy sixty-six-ten, extracurricular funds, based upon the email I received. Two of them on Friday and over the weekend. I have some questions that stem that I think would be good for public consumption.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I'll say this one more time. I'm not a fan of amending these agendas like this. Does not give the public an opportunity to be aware that we want to talk about it and come and have a say about it if they want to. So, that's a concern I have.
I understand your concern, but at the same time, I think that the public would be able to watch the meeting on YouTube if they can find it. For example, I note that they couldn't find the June ninth meeting. It's not there. There's the May meetings there, the July meetings there, the August meetings there, the April meetings there. So, I think we have some inconsistency in terms of meeting our new state law obligations that started to occur February one.
I think that tends to sometimes do that we're recording and it, the equipment doesn't work.
Well, I think we could do a better job with that. I don't think it's that hard to clean up.
I understand that.
Anyway, I'm making my motion. There's a second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Aye. That passes three to one. Ms. Penny? Next item on the agenda is community input. No one has signed up to speak this evening. If anyone in the audience would like to come up and speak, you have three minutes. Please step to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing as no one is stepping to the podium, we will move on to our next item. Academic update and review of annual survey results. Dr. Walker.
Thank you. I'm gonna get the presentations up here. Okay, I have a couple of different presentations for you all tonight. The first one is on the district, oh, district survey results, or the survey results, either, either way. So, the district survey results. These are the survey results from last year, last school year. First, I want to talk about the staff survey. So, we did have one hundred and sixty-six total responses, and that, those encompass all of the staff groups. So, we have classified and certified positions both represented as a part of this survey.
Morgan? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, you're fine.
How many possible responses could there have been?
Uh, how many staff do we have?
Just, yeah.
Probably have.
Just under four hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say three, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so, we did have representation from each building, and so, we have sort of a comprehensive, balanced view of the current status as we look through the information here. So, as far as the staff survey went, a few strengths kind of made their way to the top. Staff reported that they're proud to work in Danville Corporation. They enjoy coming to school most days. That's a great thing. They talked about the strong relationships that they have among their colleagues and with students, especially at the middle, at the elementary and middle school levels. Staff recognized progress with the construction and facility improvements, and most of them feel very safe in their classrooms and common areas. And if not, they feel like they see that some of the improvements that we're making are due to safety, and so, they were all a fan of that. And they also highlighted creative, engaging instruction and value the support of their instructional coaches that they get. A few areas of concern from the staff survey that came up sort of in different pockets that we saw. We did note some uneven curriculum alignment, both horizontally, like across grade levels and courses, as well as vertically, like between buildings and as building, as the same course kind of shifts from one building to the next. Another area of concern was our growing EL population, which has just created additional need for support, both in and outside of the classroom. Mental health and behavior supports were identified as a large need for many of our staff, as well as the need for more professional development on instructional best practices and differentiation. So, as far as immediate action steps based on this survey for our staff, our small data team gets together. We look at these staff results as a group. Each of us looks from our own lens, so I may look from the district lens, but each building principal is looking from their own building data as well. We also break this down by students and staff in different areas. So, you know, we take the special education staff and, you know, Mrs. Lacy looks at those staff, and we look at those different separate areas so that each staff can see the data as a whole, and they can also see in their own specific department and area. And then, they kind of use that data to come up with some immediate action steps. So, some of the things that we talked about at the end of last year that either we are working on implementing or honestly have already started to implement, that we started this, this school year, was to, again, prioritize curriculum mapping completion and monitoring of consistent implementation across buildings during PLC meetings. That's been something we've been working on and will continue. We also have decided to offer some targeted professional development this year for our teachers. So, we're gonna be talking about supporting EL and diverse learners. We have a, one of our professional development days later in the year will be dedicated to our EL population, as well as differentiation and instructional best practices. So, another one of our professional development days we organize is around tier-one and tier-two instructions, so trying to help give students the best instructional opportunity the first time around, as well as how do we help those who may not have gotten it that first time around. And then, some specifics from the buildings, very specific to some of the needs that they saw. So, North is adding mobile offices in the hallway to be closer to behavioral needs in the classrooms. And they also added a behavior support teacher this year to support students that have some, some behavioral needs. South is continuing to use a behavior committee to address staff concerns and ensure consequences are aligned and communicate those outcomes with staff. The middle school has added an additional EL teacher. So, Rachel Bush is now at the middle school full-time. That's allowed Kim Hayes to focus on EL just at the high school, and then Stephanie Brewer takes all of the elementary students. So, adding that additional support has been great. And then, the high school added a warrior card incentive for students to recognize them for their hard work. And also, they've already started encouraging more student participation as the mob is traveling to various school events. School spirit was something that was seen as, as one of those areas that they wanted to see some improvement in. On the parent survey, we had three hundred and nine total responses. So, you know, I put a note in here, this number is up from last year. So, last year, we had two hundred and fifty parent responses, but obviously still represents a smaller percentage of parents than we would prefer on this survey. We did try to give the survey out at a different time this year, a little earlier in the school year, and we feel like that helped. It was better timing for parents. The end of the school year can get a little crazy with all of the end-of-the-year things, so I think we'll probably use that same timing again. So, we think that may have helped, but we still would love to have more parents complete the survey. We did have equal representation from each building, though, so this is sort of a good whole picture. The strengths from our parents that they shared, they talked about parent-teacher relationships. So, ninety-six percent of our parents felt comfortable talking to their child's teacher or teachers. Communication was a big one, so ninety-seven percent of our parents, they felt that the survey consistently breathed the school communications. So, that is outstanding. Belonging and care, so ninety-six percent reported their child has friends and feels connected at school. That's very important. And the small-town culture. So, parents repeatedly praised our community feel, caring teachers, that sort of small-town feel that I know we are also proud of here in Danville. Some areas of concern that parents shared, so our families of high school students wanted more electives and clubs and enrichment and academic, both academic and extracurricular. Parents expressed concerns about student behaviors, fairness and consequences, and safety disruptions that aligned with our staff survey. While most parents read the updates, some feel left out of the loop on ways we teach non-academic content, like bullying and safety and some of those things. And then, fourteen percent of our parents disagreed that homework was high-quality and supported learning. So, those are all areas of concern. And to address those, some of these immediate action steps that our team has already talked about, is that we want to share more regular updates on non-academic programming, like bullying prevention and SEL, safety, first, via our school and district communication. We did work on streamlining our student handbook this year. We got our staff one complete this last year, and we've kind of been working on streamlining our student handbook a little to ensure that there are some consistent behavioral expectations across schools, and so, parents are more in the know about behavior and what some of those things look like from building to building. We did streamline our grading practices recently. That, hopefully, that provides a smoother transition for students. But homework practices, I think, are a great conversation to have next. We want to increase access to clubs, arts, electives, non-athletic extracurriculars, and balance the recognition and resources across all sports and activities. So, that's something we've already started to talk about. What are some of those opportunities we can add for students? And processes were streamlined between buildings, including family communication timelines and expectations for when a teacher should reach out to parents, so that we are a little bit more proactive versus reactive there in getting the information to parents that they need. Any questions on our staff or parents' survey from the last school year?
I don't have any questions, Dr. Walker, but I would like to see the, the raw results, much as I did the last few years.
Sure.
If you could send those for me for both the staff and parents.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate that very much.
I could do that, absolutely.
Okay, comments or questions?
We go on to the second? Okay, all right, now up to academic assessments. So, these are all of our academic assessments from last school year. The last one that came in was our I READ three, so that was the last one we were waiting on, and now that we have that, we're happy to share these results. I want to start with I-Learn, so that's our assessment for grades three through eight in both ELA and math. I always show this sort of analysis over time, just because I think it's very interesting to see sort of the dips and the natural things that occur. So, when you look at some of the progress, you see some of those dips, and I tried to kind of explain. Anytime the standards are updated or there's an updated test, the state kind of as a whole takes one of those dips, and then, you sort of figure out a new test, and then, they make another change, and then you kind of figure out that test, and then they make another change. And so, you see some of those kinds of dips that all kind of go over time. So, it's interesting, once I put all the other schools on, you'll see that we all kind of take the same, sometimes, ups and downs as you go. So, while it may look like some of these from year to year, you may be doing better and worse, sometimes the new test comes in and it kind of changes, changes the game on you, and you have to kind of figure out a new set of standards. So, our score is in the top eight percent in Indiana this year for our I-Learn success. I always like to not only kind of show our number and talk about where we are in the state, but look at some comparisons. So, I have an analysis over time. These are all the numbers, but what I feel like is sort of more interesting to look at for me is the graph of the analysis over time. These are Hendrix County schools. And I know it's small in the, in the key down there, but you could kind of see where, where Danville is at, where we are at in the county, where we sort of rank, and then how those scores change every time. You see those same dips, like I showed you on that, on that first slide there, that everybody kind of takes those same things, but this kind of helps us track where we are as we go through. So, we compare ourselves and a lot of things with this Hendrix County group. These are the other schools in our school district. As you see, we took a nice increase this year, which was outstanding to see. And then, we also have a like cohort. So, these are schools that we've put into a system we have that have about the same number of students we do, about the same number of special education population that we do, about the same amount of free and reduced lunch students as we do, about the same amount of EL students. So, this is a group that looks very much like us as we look from school to school. And so, this is a group that we kind of keep our eye on as well. And so, we have the, the chart there, but again, the, the graph kind of paints a better picture for me, and you can sort of see where we are and where we perform with this group. And as you can see, we were leading the pack there this last year, so that was very exciting on our I-Learn results.
Are those the same groups of schools that you look at year after year after year?
Yes.
You didn't just go there and pick.
Correct.
We were better than, and then put on the graph.
Correct. Yes, correct. Yeah. Next one is SAT. This is our grade eleven assessment. So, our SAT scores really soared this year. Our high school teachers worked really hard, and you can see they made huge progress. There are not as many of these data points as there are I-Learn, because this test has just been added a few years ago. So, we've only got a few data points where the SAT was a required test. Not that our students didn't take SAT before, but it wasn't a state requirement. And so, twenty-twenty-three was the first year that the state required, so we've got data from that point on. So, you can see on the left there, that's our like cohort, and on the right, those are the other Hendrix County schools. And so, we ended up with a, scores in the top four percent in Indiana due to, you know, a lot of hard work, I think, by those teachers and us getting things aligned to the SAT assessment. So, we were really excited about those results. Our next one was I READ three. This was our required grade-three assessment. So, we were in the top fourteen percent in the state. Well, of the state average there, you can see, again, on the left is our like cohort group, and on the right are the county schools. Did a great job, and you know, those, those percentages are very high. The state average is eighty-seven percent, and we're consistently above that state average. So, our, our goal is, that ninety-five percent mark is a huge mark at the state level. That's where the, the state goal is. So, anytime we're over that ninety-five percent, we feel like we're in very good shape.
Morgan, is it like by twenty-twenty-eight that all schools have to be at that ninety-four, ninety-five percent?
Yeah, I think they want the ninety-five percent, and you know, and you're, we're creeping, creeping there for sure. With some schools with, with a lot, a lot of room to, to still grow up. But they have, in the past couple of years, they've recognized schools at that ninety-five percent level and up that are, you know, schools that have already gotten there ahead of the state goal, so.
Do we know how we did, like, in the second grade, second grade takes I READ three?
Uh-huh.
And do you know what our percentage was there?
Yeah, we, we had, like, we were mid-sixties for our second graders. Our goal internally is to try to get to seventy percent. That's what we've targeted. If we can get at least seventy percent of the second graders at a pass rate, we feel like that gives us a small enough group that we can really intervene in third grade. So, we're, we're close.
Yeah.
Yep. So, we are obviously celebrating, so, you know, staff, hard work, care for the students, made awesome results possible this year. We want to take time to share our pride and our gratitude with teachers, and, you know, continuing to build a culture where success is celebrated. Our goals for this year are sort of based on that data and all the data that we have come in. We want to provide strong tier-one instruction. Again, that's the instruction the first time that we are giving it to students. Strengthening tier-two interventions, so after I've taught the content for all of those students that may need some additional help on those grade-level standards, we want to really strengthen the tier-two interventions that we're giving them this year. Improving the PLC process, something that we've been working on, but again, is, is at the forefront of our minds there. And then, developing college and career readiness skills. We've been working on some of those skills as a group, and so, how do we integrate those into our academics? So, some next steps. Data dives have been completed across the district to look at strengths and discover areas of need, things that may need some additional attention. You know, we, we definitely celebrated the success, but we're always looking to, to get better this next year. Our PLC goals for this year are ensuring that every student masters every essential standard for this year. So, that is the goal of every PLC, and so, we're working every week to try to get to that point. We're going to offer some professional development, so we're gonna align with our students' needs. So, we have Louise Cruz, who's gonna come and speak at our first PD day, and he's gonna talk about tier-two interventions. We're very excited about him coming to speak to all the staff. And then, our second PD day will focus on EL learners, and that's something that we saw as a need on the survey, something we see as a need in our data, and so, we're very excited about that. And obviously, staff will continue to monitor progress through their assessment and data reviews. All of these data points are things, our PSAT, our M-Class, IXL, I-Learn checkpoints. There are a lot of tests that we take throughout the year, and those are the tests that we utilize to help give our staff the data that they need to figure out our kids making progress before we get to that final checkpoint, that final test at the end of the year. And then, obviously, just maintaining a culture of accountability and excellence among our staff. Any questions over any of the data?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The first one has to do with next steps. If the data dives have been completed, why would that be a next step, since you've already completed it?
Well, I-
I'm looking for, to me, the communication is a little clear. I'm looking for clarity on how that becomes a next step if you've already done the dives and studied them.
Sure.
Why would that be a next step in the process?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's an ongoing process. So, you know, we looked at the end-of-the-year data from last year, but we also want to look at our M-Class and our PSAT and our IXL data that we get, our checkpoint data through this year. So, we're always looking at the most recent data and trying to make adjustments on the fly. Instead of waiting until we get to the end of the year, we take I-Learn again and go, oops, you know, we went down by a few points. So, we're constantly doing that all through the year.
And so, these next steps are things you're in the process of working on, correct?
Yes, things that have already been accomplished and things that we will continue to do all throughout this next school year.
So, then, how does that relate to how you constructed your goals for twenty-five, twenty-six, knowing you don't really have all those steps done?
Doing these?
Yeah, how did you go about setting those goals, knowing that you really haven't completed the study of the data?
Well, so, I mean, we've completed what we had from last year, and so, we utilize that data to sort of make our plans. These we do, our district goals, we did at the beginning of the summer, which gave us a lot of time to figure out professional development for this next year. But we continue to kind of take these goals and, you know, providing steer, strong tier-one instruction means we, we have to have data as we go to know how we change those. So, in our PLCs, our, our teachers are constantly looking at how to give better tier-one instruction as we go through, so.
Do you adjust those goals as you go through, as you complete the next steps? Will you adjust those goals throughout the year?
So, we have number, you know, we have like specific percentage goals that we have for each of these assessments, and so, those stay steady through the year. But I would say these, these district goals are more overarching. Each individual PLC will look at their own grade level and their own department and say, okay, if we're trying to get our kids on the SAT to fifty-six percent passing, here's what we're seeing on the PSAT, and so, we need to make adjustments on the fly in order to ramp that up to get us to that final percentage.
And is your evaluation of those goals qualitative or quantitative?
Our actual dashboard goals that, like, we report on here, on our, like, our, like, our, our district goals that we, the actual percentages, those we report out on every year. Is that what you're asking?
Well, data is evaluated in terms of qualitative and quantitative. Quantitative uses numbers, qualitative is more of a-
So, those are our quantitative.
Approaching, so, in reference to doing qualitative, quantitative, what is your process for evaluating those goals as you end the year of twenty-five, twenty-six, to determine how well you've performed on?
I see what you're saying. So, I mean, our quantitative goals are those percentages that we have set at the end. This is sort of the game plan for how we increase and get to those numeric goals by the end of the year.
A little different thing, I guess, game plan and goals are a little different in my mind, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Morgan.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, Dr. Walker. The next item on our agenda, approval of the minutes from the August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five regular school board meeting. I need a motion to approve the August eleventh meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of public work session minutes from August eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. I need a motion to approve the August eleventh public work session minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
I have a question in reference to how we post those within Board Docs. Is there any reason in Board Docs you can't create, we have the audio at the bottom. The audio, though, once you click on it, you've got to sit there for the same time as the meeting to listen to the audio of the minutes. Given what the new law has asked of us as of July one, is there any reason we can't take and put a link to the YouTube videos at the bottom, just like we do the audio, people that, to see those and just click the link there?
Yeah, I, I would need to defer to our tech department to answer that appropriately, but we can check on it and see if it's possible. We're happy to do that.
And then, if we're not going to do that, or it's not possible, given the archive that that new law asks about, what is our process for then providing the archived access to the public without them needing to do a search of YouTube?
I think we'd have to see if there's another way to direct them there. We may be able to locate those videos in a different location on our website, too, which is a possibility. Again, I'll need to see what's technologically possible, since we're using YouTube to host those. But we could perhaps, like, on the board link, maybe create a direct link to those by meeting, which would be easier to find them. I, I certainly see your point there, yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Treasury reports. Treasurers report, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. For our August fund balance and our property and state tax-supported funds, we had eight million, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The education fund had actual expenditures for the month of two million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and five dollars. We had no expenses in our debt service fund, and our operations fund had actual expenditures of one million, one thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. We transferred two hundred and eighty thousand from the education fund to the operations fund, and that brings our corporation's total transfers for the year to eleven point five-two percent of our total education fund revenue and twelve point three-nine percent of the total state tuition support. I would point out that, obviously, these expenditures look a little bit higher than typical. That's because this was a three payroll month for us, and so, that's why some of those expenditures, specifically in the education fund and the operations fund, are a little bit higher than you've seen in a typical month. So, I would ask for the board's approval and happy to answer any questions.
I need a motion to approve the Treasurers' report as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
How does our transfer from the education fund to the operations fund compare from a year ago at this time? Is the percentage up or down?
It's about in line with where we were last year. I could look that up pretty quick, but it's right in line. We were averaging about eleven and a half, twelve percent all through last year. If you remember, that's actually a little bit down from where we were in the previous years. We've been right around thirteen and a half percent, kind of maintaining that dollar amount, or that percentage, I guess. So, compared to last year, it's about right where we've been last year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of claims. Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. This evening, we have pre-written claims of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. We have our traditional claims of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, bringing total claims for the month to eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. I would ask for the board's approval of our August claims and happy to answer any questions.
A motion to approve the claims as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of payroll claims. Mr. Herbert. Next item on the agenda, approval of payroll claims, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. We have two payroll claims here for the month. We have our August 15th payroll claim of $808,305.93, and we had our August 29th payroll claim of $833,378.82, bringing total claims for the month to $1,641,684.75. So I would ask for the board's approval of our August payroll claims and happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve payroll claims as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, the next item on the agenda is for the school board to hold the preliminary hearings on the proposed projects. If you're interested in speaking at this hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there'll be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the projects. At the hearing, we'll ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and the topic, and that the topic be limited to the proposed projects under consideration. The notices of these preliminary determination hearings were published as legally required. At this time, I will ask bond counsel to explain the purpose of this hearing.
Good evening. We're here tonight because under the inner code, a school corporation must hold two public hearings if the school corporation intends to borrow money above a certain threshold amount. These public hearings are the very beginning of the legal process, and the purpose is truly to set maximums for each of the projects. Today, there will be no board action on the project. This is solely to hear public comments.
I will now hear from Mr. Herbert on how the proposed projects will be financed, as well as information about the effect of the typical, effect on the typical property taxpayer.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Again, this is a continuation of, you remember back in June, where we started this process. We've been presented with an opportunity that, as we look into the future and the growth that we have been seeing here, that we have this opportunity to establish this groundwork that gives us the ability to have funds available through the bond proceeds at a later time in the future. I know that according to our timeline that's been attached in Board Docs, you will see there, and like Mrs. McClellan said, there's no action tonight for the board. This is just strictly a public hearing. After this, there are still going to be several more steps that the board will have to take in order for us to complete this process and to get to the point where we would want to issue any type of bonds, whether it's for, in this case, the first one, we're talking about the building project, or we'll discuss here in a little bit, the maintenance project. So as we look at the need that has aroused, that has come from this, the main being that we are experiencing tremendous amount of growth here in Danville. We are all very familiar with that, with the different housing additions that we have seen coming in, with the student enrollment numbers that we continue to see going up. We foresee that here, within the next five to seven years, that we are going to have to start looking at the building of an additional building. The student grade levels and such that we go into that building has not been determined at this point. But this is, again, laying the foundation that gives us the ability to be able to do the bond sales that we have done in the past, like we have for the high school project, for our South project, to be able to really avoid the potential of taking a referendum to our community. Without this being a, you know, without this being a tool that we have in our toolbox, I've commonly referred to this, again, as just a tool, because we don't know into the future what other further legislative changes might take place. So we don't know if this is going to be needed or not, but it is a tool that we have available to us as we continue through this process that will give us another way to avoid a referendum for our community. Again, talking about it really just the needs of this, it's coming through the growth. Again, this is not what we're doing this evening, is putting anything in stone as far as when we would have to issue bonds or even if we would have to issue bonds. This is just giving us the ability to do that as we continue to move forward. So for this evening, I also want to show, on behalf of our Stiefel folks, who unfortunately could not be with us this evening, give me a second inputs. So again, this is just, we're talking about just the building project here. So this would be the familiar slide that we've seen before in the past, that typically our Stiefel folks would kind of go over. When we look at this par amount for this bond, now again, like Mrs. McClellan stated when she was up, these are setting the maximums. So if you remember, as we go through this process, we are just setting maximums. We can always decrease as we go through the process, but as we get to this point and as we start talking about these numbers, we can't increase them without really starting the process over again. So for the building project, the estimated par amount for these bonds would be $95 million. Estimated cost for issuances and discount, and underwriter discounts would be $750,000, which would be allowing estimated proceeds available for the hard and soft costs, or basically the construction cost, to be $94,250,000. Estimated interest expense of $80,165,108, bringing with an estimated maximum interest rate at 7%. I can tell you that it's not at 7% right now, but again, we're going to have to set the maximum that these potentially could be. The maximum lease rental payment, so the amount we would pay back to the bond on an annual basis, would be $13 million. And then the estimated max tax rate impact would be 95.9595 cents. So with that, again, knowing that this is going to be a future potential project, these numbers are looking at as we sit today. Again, we still do not have our NAV for this upcoming year, for 2026. So this is based on 2025 NAV. We still anticipate to see some growth as we go into the future. And so these numbers are just as we sit today. Again, if you remember back to when we were discussing even our bigger project for the high school, we knew that those numbers were rather large. But we also, we worked with Stiefel, we worked with Ice Miller and all of our other partners to make sure that we had, really did not have a tax rate impact to our community. Not to say that this won't be the new or the way that it will be into the future with the legislative changes, but again, as we sit today with today's numbers, these are just the maximums that we would be presenting for you right now. So let me stop that.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Bring that slide back up.
Oh, sorry. Give me a second here.
So these are the legal maxes. So under that estimated interest expense, somewhere down the road, if whatever was going on in economies with interest rates would cause that to rise above that amount, we would then need to scale the project back-
Yes.
In order to get interest rates to fall-
Correct.
Underneath our max.
Correct.
Okay. That was my first question. My next question is, within the documents you gave us as a board packet, you gave a sample timeline. Do you have a timeline developed yet?
For this project? No, we don't, and really, that's because we're looking at, it's going to be hinging upon how much growth we see coming. We know that over, if we look at our growth last year, from fall to fall, we were up roughly 150 students.
Wouldn't this hearing though be part of that timeline?
It is part of that timeline, this is just the- This is, yes, the project approval. So once we get through this, it doesn't lock us into saying that we have to go at a certain speed. We can either speed up or slow down at whatever our needs would be.
So essentially, the sample timeline you gave me, we're at the top of the list there, where it says, deliver notice of project hearing to the newspaper? Were we before that, or after that?
Sorry, let me get, I'm trying to get it back up here.
We are-
We're after that.
Yeah. We're after that.
If you scroll down.
So we're right on September 8th on the second page there.
For me to keep track of things, I guess I would like you to go ahead and take that sample timeline and flesh it out, and those things in the future that are yet to be determined with TDB. And then-
Well, that, yeah, that's what I was talking about. Those are, those are to be determined, because we don't know when those are going to be.
It'd be nice to build, to have that timeline. Seems to me like we're already in the midst of the timeline, so we should have a timeline developed, even though some things are yet to be determined.
I would say true, but if you look at this timeline from the, from the completion of it, from start to finish, that could range anywhere from four months to 10 years.
But for me, as a board member, to track that information, having the timeline on paper would be easier.
Correct.
To stay in tune with it.
Sure.
To refer back to it, as opposed to needing to go back and look at meeting minutes or until we get things resolved technology-wise, to get video clips-
Sure.
Stable, reliable. It would just help me.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
So these are just, this is just a hearing to get the project okayed?
Yeah.
Eventually, I'm looking here on the, like Jim said, on the to be determined dates. That's when you really gets to, could be this board, it could be another board.
Correct.
Probably another board that'll give the okay. You'll come back to the board and say, okay, we've got this many students now, we need to go ahead with the project. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that right.
Yes, correct.
We're not, we're really, nothing for us to okay.
No, as you, so as you look at this timeframe, you do see that we do have some things scheduled for next board meeting.
Right.
So in the next board meeting, we will have the second hearing, so we have to have this hearing tonight, and then we have a second hearing. There are several resolutions that we will ask the board to approve at the next October meeting. After that, that is when really the time, first of all, there's two things that are really going to happen there. There's a 30-day wait period that we will go through at the end of that October board meeting. Once we get past that 30 days, then if we said that we needed these dollars immediately, then we would just jump into the next, I would say, the next TBD, which is the school board meeting, which is further resolutions that we need to adopt. We know that we're not going to jump into it that fast, because we were not there yet.
Right.
That, that's the date that, yes, will be in the future. That could be with another board, that could be, I'm assuming it's going to be with another board. I don't foresee us getting through that in the next year and a half, because again, that's where the driver is going to be on the enrollment and what our buildings capacities are starting to look like and trying to determine, okay, now's the time when our capacities are getting to the point where we're not comfortable with. We need to start looking at this next project.
Gotcha. So after essentially November 18th, this whole deal just goes, puts in your toolbox, right? And we're done with it until, until the time, four, five, whatever it may be.
We'll call it a hypernose.
I think I had heard in some of my questioning that the reason that we went ahead and were doing these hearings was what Kristen had recommended, that we do it all in the same year-
Yes.
And then get to a stopping point.
Yes, and the other thing, I like to describe it as, right now, you're approving the maximums on a project. What we're talking about, about the to be decided dates, that's for each bond issued. So we have approvals of the projects, so buildings and maintenance. If those go through and we get approval and we get through our 30 days, then we come back when you need the money. Like if we needed a new roof at North or a new HVAC system at South, then the board, the admin team and us, we come back to the board and say, out of the buildings project that was approved, and we went through the 30-day wait, we now need $3 million. And then the board would decide, but it would have to fit within all these parameters all in.
Okay.
You're exactly right.
Okay.
In terms of the building project, I mean, we certainly don't anticipate this being in the next year or even two. But I would also tell you, looking at our most current information we have, which are enrollments, I also don't look at this being seven or eight years either. I think it's more likely to be in that four to six-year range. I don't think it's that far out. We begin to look at our capacity mapping room by room in our buildings, and we're also having the demographic study updated, which will give us a little bit more information.
When do we get those results?
We should have those near the, we should have them, a presentation for the November board meeting.
November, okay.
Yeah.
We have a preliminary report completed at the moment, don't we?
No, not-
In one of your updates, we had a preliminary report that was delivered to you from Policy Analytics?
No, not, not on the demographic study. That's, McKibben is doing our report there. We've provided them some initial information of our last few years of enrollment, those types of things. They will need our official account here in October. Then they'll finalize out the draft report, and then they'll present the final report to us at the November board meeting is the plan right now. But we're also looking at space very carefully, and then looking at what our last couple of years' growth are. If our, if our growth pattern continues like it has this last two years, it's going to push that timeline a little tighter. Now, if it slacks off a little bit, which there's always that possibility, and that's why I think a renewed demographic study will help us look, you know, in this next five years and kind of understand what that looks like. We'll have a little bit better information, I think, here later this fall. But that's why it's really hard to put, we can do our best to guess when those TBDs will be, but it will be just an educated guess at this point, once we get beyond November 18th on that chart.
Thank you.
Are you done, Mr. Herbert?
I'm done, it is.
Okay.
Back to you.
Time for the hearing.
And I apologize, I think I jumped ahead in my readings when I introduced that section.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing related to the building project. Remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which is located at the back of the room. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name, address. Limit your comments to the proposed building project and financing. Keep any comments to three minutes and avoid being repetitive if possible. Based on the few people sitting in this room, I'm going to assume that there is no one that signed in back there, but if there's anyone sitting here that would like to speak, please step to the podium and state your name and address. As I see no one making their way to the podium, I would like to note that this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this hearing is solely to hear public comment. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on October 13th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. We're going to do that all over again. The next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a preliminary hearings on the proposed projects. If you're interested in speaking at this hearing, please make sure you have signed the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the hearing, we would ask that each person limit their comment to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under construct, under consideration. The notice of these preliminary determination hearings were published legally as required. This time, I will ask bond counsel to explain the purpose of this hearing.
The purpose of the hearing on the maintenance project is the same as the buildings project. So just, again, anytime a school proposes to finance a project above a certain threshold, we have to have two hearings and then wait the 30 days. Again, just like the buildings project would be presented with maximums, and there is no board action required tonight, just a public hearing.
We will now hear from Mr. Herbert about the process of determining and communicating each of the projects to the community and the need for each project, and also how the proposed projects will be financed, as well as information about the effect to the total, to the typical property taxpayer, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Again, very similar to the buildings project that we just discussed. The only difference here is just going to be the dollar amount and really the intent of these funds. So like we discussed, the first building, the first bond issuer of the hearing was for a building project in order to build a new building. This would be for more of a maintenance project. This would be anticipated to be kind of broken out over multiple issues. So if you think back, how we've kind of structured our bonds here in the past, we have our major, large bond that we did, the 150 million to do the high school project. We've kind of broken that over three different issuances. That's why we would do the building project, but if you think of this one, think of more of how we've done our GOs over the last several years, where we take a smaller dollar amount, we're able to use those dollars to do some of these other smaller projects and do some of the maintenance-type things that we need throughout the district. That's what this one would be as well. So the, the, again, caps or the maximums that we're looking at on this would be the par amount of 25 million. Again, that would be broken out over several issuances over several years that we would spread this out as the district would need. That's where we would have the ability that, once we determine whatever that need might be, we would bring it back to the board, give you the presentation of, okay, we maybe we need $3 million because we need to put a new roof on North Elementary, and we need to do some HVAC work here at the middle school. So we'd be able to give you an idea of what those dollars are specifically going to go towards before we issue the bonds and before we do anything further from that process. When we look at the estimated cost of issuance for the underwriters' discount, 300,000, giving us total proceeds for the hard and soft or maintenance projects of 24,700,000. Estimated interest expense of 21,90,067, setting a maximum interest rate at- When we look at the estimated cost of issuance for the end writers discount, 300,000, giving us total proceeds for the hard and soft or maintenance projects of 24,700,000. Estimated interest expense of 21,90,067, setting a maximum interest rate at 7% with a maximum annual lease payment of $5 million with the estimated maximum tax rate impact of 36.90 cents. Again, very similar to the previous project, just this one would be broken up a little bit more than how we have seen building projects. This would be treated more like a general obligations bond, even though it still would be a lease bond, but would be used just strictly for the maintenance, things that we need to kind of help offset the operational expenses like we've been using our GO bonds for. Really over the past, I think back to 2019 is when we kind of started that philosophy and that strategy. So over the last six or seven years here. Again, that's, that's what I've got and happy to answer any questions.
One, again, I'd like to timeline on this hearing as well, just like I asked for the last.
Yep, sure.
And then secondly, I guess it just struck me, looking, you said the estimated interest expenses based on what we, what we know today.
Correct.
So if this was going in place today, we'd be spending almost as much as we're borrowing to pay the 25 million back. Same thing on the other project.
Correct.
That seems awful steep.
Again, these are the maximums. So today, I'd say the interest rate wouldn't be 7%. It would be closer. I didn't ask him, three and a half. So obviously, that's, that's a much lower interest rate, which would reduce those interest costs. We would break it up. Again, we wouldn't be taking the full 25 million. So that's for, if you did a full issuance of that, same thing with the building project. If you remember, when we had that discussion of the 150, the reason we broke it into three different category, or three different issuances, was that we didn't want to pay the interest on money that's just sitting there.
Was this, I can't remember. Was this information presented to us back in June before you were asked us to vote on moving this forward?
Yes, it was.
I guess now it just kind of dawns on me, that's kind of alarming that we could potentially end up spending almost what we're borrowing to pay it back.
Sure. I must say, that's why we're, we will definitely, when we get closer to the time or when it is time to actually start issuing them, have a much better idea as far as, you know, we don't know what the net asset value is going to be doing. We don't know what the rates will be doing at that point in time, meaning both tax rates that we would pay here as a local community and also the interest rates that we would pay back on those bonds themselves. And it would, it would matter too on how quickly paid them back, much like, I mean, we're paying interest on our GOs as well, just we pay those back in a short timeframe, which helps to defray some of that interest cost. 7% is a pretty, especially in, I think today's world, is a pretty high percentage. But again, we're setting that max, setting it very high, so we know we stay below it. But, you know, if, if interest rates were 3.5% today, I think the likelihood would tell us they might even go a little bit lower here in the near future, probably not a lot lower, but maybe a little bit lower as we look across here the next few years. But again, we have to set the max. It's not really, fundamentally, it's not a lot different than what we're doing now, but there certainly are those interest costs you're going to have to pay along with the premium on that, so.
And we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily take out 25 million. We'd only take out what we need, right?
Correct, yeah.
So it might be 3 million, 10 million.
Yeah, I envisioned really this kind of being five at most for each issuance. But again, it's also going to be determined on what our needs are.
Right.
What's the most we've paid on interest on a $5 million GO bond today?
I'd have to go back and pull that number for you.
If you could, I'd appreciate that.
Yep.
Not close to seven, though?
No, no. I mean, as far as interest rates, we've been in the mid-threes.
Again, I'm not looking for the interest rate. Well, you can give me the interest rate and the amount of money.
Sure, yep. Yeah, I'd say we've been.
Keep me from doing the calculator work.
Yep. Mid-threes to low fours is the rate, and then I can get you the interest expense.
Jim, I have a question. How do you, how would you want dates put on the timeline if we really don't know? Like, if you want.
I'm not saying the dates in the future. Those are going to be, to be determined. It's a matter of having that information out and things that have already been done. The dates that we did do, like this meeting, what was that date that we did that hearing?
Oh, it's on the timeline. It's on that sheet.
That's a sample timeline, it said.
No, but it's what we're calling right now.
It is a sample. Although, these first few dates, we, we've hit all those dates.
I'm just saying, I think I've requested if you can get it to me, as opposed to being a sample one, give me the actual.
Yep.
Which is the same thing, though.
Well, that's fine.
Well, we can also fill in the amounts on the top. There are some things we can do.
There's more information that can be a little bit more detailed for the future. And again, if you don't, if you're comfortable doing that, I think you should, you should feel comfortable going about it any way you want. But the question being on why I want it.
No, I was.
I think you need to understand that I have a different paperwork process than perhaps your, your generation.
Okay. All right. So we are now going to open the public hearing relating to the maintenance project. Please remember, if you would like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which is located in the back of the room. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address, limit your comments to the proposed maintenance project and financing, keep any comments to three minutes, and avoid being repetitive if possible. I see no one on the sign-in sheet. I see the same three people in the room. Would anyone like to speak about the maintenance project? Seeing as no one is stepping to the podium, I would like to once again note that this is just the first step in the legal process. No board action is legally required at this hearing. Rather, this is hearing to, rather, this hearing is to solely hear public comment. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. The board will hold a second public hearing in this boardroom on October 13th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of personnel recommendations. Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. I recommend approval of the personnel report as submitted. A couple of notes here. We are hiring a couple of newly licensed bus drivers, which will be particularly helpful. We certainly need some more yet. We do have some additional folks in training. We are accepting resignation from Mrs. Nickel on our facilities coordinator role. We are looking to, as best we can, redistribute those duties and absorb that role to save some money in the operations fund as we move forward. You also see we have a new teaching position in special education at the middle school. That teacher is about to start for us. Special education teachers are very difficult to find on the market, so we were able to find somebody here a few weeks into school, and we'll be able to get her started because we, our numbers continue to grow at the middle school, and they certainly can, can use the support there. That will help us meet our IEP requirements. So with that, I would ask the board's approval of the personnel report.
All right. Motion to approve the personnel report as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
I have a question about the resignation of the coordinator of operations and what you just said in terms of redistributing those duties and using that money's back throughout the operations fund. Does that mean that you're eliminating that position from the organizational chart?
We haven't decided whether we can eliminate it totally yet. We may, we may. We want to see if we can successfully redistribute these duties and still get the work done with, you know, people existing here in the district, or whether we may need to do something on a part-time basis to do some of those duties. We need a little bit of time here to see how it works. We, we could. We haven't fully made that decision yet on completely eliminating the position.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, approval of corporation safety plan. Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Annually, the legislature requires school boards to now approve the emergency plan for the district and also to approve the safe school committees and teams. So both of those are presented before you this evening, and I want to thank Chief Oliphant, who is here this evening also, for putting all this together. There are additional requirements, it seems like every year, that come out to make sure our plans are up to date, people are appropriately trained, and all the committee personnel are identified, and he's taken the lead in doing that along with our building principals. So I appreciate their collective work. There were not a lot of changes necessary to the emergency plan this year. For the most part, it was updating the maps, which is a bit of a tedious amount of work, but that's identifying locations on maps. And then as far as other changes, it was mostly name changes and personnel changes that were, as people have moved in and out of the district. The list, the shortlist of those are on the last page of the plan, if you had a chance to look at that, on page 100 of 100 of the emergency plan. The safe school committees, that additional handout is also before you. So you have a committee at each building, which is required by law, and then you have a district-level committee that oversees all of that as a district. And then on the second page, you, we also have a multidisciplinary threat assessment team and crisis intervention teams that are required, and those personnel are also listed on the second page of that attachment. So be happy to answer questions as you may have them. Otherwise, I would ask the board's approval of the emergency plan and the safe school committees.
Approval of the corporation's safety plan as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Himsel. Comments or questions?
I think on page three, you still have one update you need to do on names and titles. It's Dr. Morgan Walker now, who should be Assistant Superintendent of Instruction or for instruction.
Okay, same.
From what I can see.
So noted. We can make that change. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, school board policy review. Dr. Schaefer.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cherry. And I believe we're in there, we didn't designate at the time of the motion, but I'll make the assumption that we want to put the policy review of extracurriculars in this segment would be under item 6.3, School Board Policy 6610 on ECA. So if it'd be okay with the board, we'll, we'll work through what's here, then we can flip over to the policy tab there and take a look at that one as well. So under, and there's a lot of policy here tonight. So what we're looking at, these are part of the board's ongoing review of policies in this section, which would be 3112, Employment Qualifications, 3120, which is also duplicated as 4120, under Employment of Support Staff. It's certified and support staff here, actually. 3120.4, Employment of Substitute Teachers, 3120.6, which is Selecting Student Teachers and Interns, School Board Policy 3121, Criminal History Checks for School Employees, and 3121.1, which is Criminal History Information under, for applicants and contractors. And again, those last two are repeated in other areas of policy. So I went through those six policy areas. Again, they appear to generally be in good order. I do want to reach out to ISBA to check on the criminal history checks, just to make sure everything is still fully compliant. I, I believe that it is. I do know there were a couple changes in the last legislative session where boards can now, you could actually employ someone with a little bit more of a criminal history, but the board itself would need to specifically be aware of that and approve the hire, if we were to hire an employee with specific types of even potential felony backgrounds, which are lower-level felonies. Used to be, you really didn't want to and couldn't hire somebody like that. Now there are some exceptions, but it requires specific score, school board approval, and I just want to see if those need to be specifically stated out in policy. They are in statute. You don't have to have everything in policy that's in statute because that's why you have the law, but sometimes it's just good practice to have that there sort of in front of you in your, in your policy package. So I'll be reaching out to ISBA on those two, just to see if we need to add anything additional on those. I don't know if you have questions on any of those others that are listed there. Okay, if you would click on the policy tab, and then on your dropdown, click on active. And in your left-hand panel, that will scroll up and down, very far left, you can hit the section 6000 Finances, and that will drop down. And then you can find 6610, which is on extracurricular funds.
Ready?
Yes.
So my questions is based upon the email that I got this weekend from administration of board members, that the State Board of Accounts has stopped auditing these funds.
Correct.
When did that happen?
I want to say at least, at least two cycles ago.
So it's before I got on the board?
Yes, it would have been, I believe.
And then, within the policy, I mean, well, first off, extracurricular funds refers to robotics club? The band?
Yes.
Athletics?
Correct.
Any organization that's extracurricular that we have.
Correct.
Because on the last sentence of the first paragraph, it talks about Curricular Activity Funds and Supervised and Reported to the School Board Trustees. Since I've been on the board, I don't recall, or maybe I've missed it, getting any reports about the status of any of those funds.
Correct. And I don't believe we have. And that's something, I was looking at this too, thinking that is something that we want to make sure we do get prepared for the board.
I guess, I guess that's my concern, is that administration hasn't been hearing the policy. That's my concern here in asking that question. And when the State Board of Accounts notified you that they weren't going to continue audit these funds, did you present to the board another process in which to provide internal audits and so forth, that the process will be understood as to how a board would understand we're keeping tabs on those funds?
Yeah. The direct answer is no. I, I think what you would need to do, what we would need to do as a district, if we went down that path, is to do a private audit. I think would be about the only comprehensive way I could see of doing that. It used to be that State Board of Accounts, they would collect, you know, your taxpayer and do all your taxpayer funds and audit those, and they would pull up your ECAs and audit those same time, but separately, and provide you a report back on that. I think due to funding, lack of staffing, et cetera, over time, the state just said, it's not that important. We're going to drop the ECA portion of that. So what they audit today are your tax, your taxpayer funds, and then each year, they'll do typically one or two of your federal areas as well. But they're not, they're not doing ECA. Not saying we couldn't do that, and we do have to pay, we pay a fee for that to the, to the state to have our own audits done through the State Board of Accounts. If the board wanted to, we could look into doing some sort of private audit. I mean, there's going to be a cost to it, but that could be done. But, and I, I hadn't recognized that was there either, and we've reviewed through policy probably several times.
Yeah, it hasn't been up since, I think, the spring. I want to say, I'd like to back at it, and I think the last time I saw it in the cycle was like January, the, somewhere January, March of '23.
That's probably right, yeah.
I didn't catch it at that time, but then also I didn't understand that the State Board of Accounts had stopped doing those audits.
Right.
And then to see the amount of monies that was mentioned in one of those accounts. You know, for transparency to the community, it sure seems like we should be following policy and getting something in place. I, I find it a little concerning. I've been on the, on the board since '23, and those counts have not been really given much attention to outside of the employees that we hired. And I certainly trust them, but when it comes to monies and reporting to the community, it just seems like an audit periodically, and as the policy says, reports to the board would certainly be not too much to ask.
Sure. And it's not. I guess the question I have for the board is, how often would you like, I mean, you, you want to see something, like a report? Because we'd have the treasures pull those together as, as per policy there and create a report, because you're going to have a fairly long list of ECA funds in each building. It'll be a little bit longer at middle school and high school, of course, than it will be the elementaries. So I, I think off the top of my head, I would think that might be something to do annually. If you wanted it more often, we could.
I'm thinking semestral.
I, I think, yeah, I would think.
Or see, we're at the end of, we're in thirds, because you have, I mean, so you got some of those extracurricular clubs, robotics, probably operates throughout the year.
That's correct.
So, but then you have your athletics that are by seasons. Band is more so in the fall than it is in the spring, but yet it still probably does some camps and all that kind of stuff that interfacts, interacts with that, so.
I, I mean, I think that as a school district, we kind of want to keep a pulse on those, so I would say probably twice a year. I don't think we need a quarterly, but probably twice a year, because then if you did see something, you would be able to correct it quicker than waiting till later.
So maybe.
I would think maybe in January, after they've closed out, then you can kind of see that in January.
Give them over time, say February and August. That would give.
Yeah, makes sense.
I think twice a year would, I would say. And I don't know if we want to say that specifically in the policy.
Again, I think there's maybe, I think for clarity reasons and understanding what we're doing there, I, I think, again, we can have the, this be the discussion tonight. We can put it on the agenda in October for it to be under the.
Sure.
Update or review process, but I do think the policy could be a little bit more specific in reference to noting those two times, and then, Mr. Herbert, do you have any recommendations on what the format of those reports should be?
Let me, let me get back to you with some information on that.
Because again, I'm looking for some sort of format, that it's just not what the balances are, but
Sure.
Again, what are the expenditures that they're making? When are the deposits, those sort of things? I mean, given, again, when I read an email, and although it was somewhat explained, that explanation still seems to be a little bit loose of how gate money gets from a gate to a bank account, and then is recognized as not being part of another deposit.
Sure.
But are the all individual deposits. So again, I'm, doesn't need to be long, but I do want to, I think it does need to be specific, given what I read.
Sure.
I've kind of got a question on the, be the first sentence there, where it says that each extracurricular organization shall have the ability to organize and generate their own funds. Were we looking to go to one fundraising group, though? Is that what I've read?
One boosters' discussion.
I think that was boosters for athletics.
Boosters for athletic?
Not for all.
Okay, so that's, the boosters' money doesn't necessarily come into this.
Correct.
School doesn't handle booster money, right?
That would not be ours.
Okay.
Yes.
So that wouldn't have anything to do with?
Correct.
Because the booster money is nowhere within the walls of our
Correct. They would, they would form their own, they have their own 501(c)(3)'s or something equivalent, they would have to perform their own audits.
So, so the monies that comes in from the, what I read in that email, the pending work to be done on a calendar or something that has ads for our local businesses and so forth, the monies that comes in from that, though, goes into the athletic account.
That's correct.
And that's sort of.
Well, no, sorry. The, the dollars that are coming in from the revenue, we have set up a separate fund for those dollars, so that we will be able to specifically track what revenue is coming in, and then where those expenses are going. So that could be.
I think, again, that's the, part of the details that I think is missing, that to me, that still seems to be, those monies from those ads are being managed by the which department? Athletic Department?
Really from the business department right now.
Well, I guess that concerns me, that how long is, how long have we been selling those ads? How many years have we?
We just started.
Okay, so again, looking for accountability, clarity, specifics, to me, reading those email, those emails, I just, for a while, it seems like we should be, as a board, being a little bit more scrutinizing of what's going on, since we're being asked to have a report to us that hasn't been occurring. Seems like we need to tighten our hands up a little bit.
So we'll go twice a year on the reports?
In specific, so.
We talk about audits, are we going to internally do that audit?
Well, I think they can look into that, and again, maybe make some recommendations as part of the policy update come October.
I think if we can internally do it without costing.
Yeah, I mean, like Dr. Schaefer said, yeah, if we do it externally, it will cost, it will cost something, and.
And again, you know, we trust you, but again, I think in reference to the flow of the information, the specifics of the paperwork hasn't been happening to the point that it says I should be seeing something since January '23, and I haven't.
That's good. Yeah, we'll plan to bring that back at the October meeting. I've got just notes, looking at potentially a couple times a year, we'll look at a format and figure out what exactly then you want to do in the October meeting.
And again, some of that's going to be the policy, but then I guess, maybe the thing that goes along with it is the administrative guidelines, I mean, all the stuff in terms how you're going to go about providing this report, to me, would be part of the administrative guidelines. So as part of that, bringing that back in October, I think presenting that administrative guideline would be good as well.
Where is our fundraising policy under?
6610, under Finance.
You're talking specifically fundraising?
No, fundraising, because I was just.
Fundraising.
Would we need to approve those if it got over that, like if the advertisements got over that, that's my thought.
Right.
Good catch.
Yeah, because we did just change that to fifteen hundred or two thousand a year ago.
No, we changed it more.
Did we raise it more than that?
I think we raised it to fifteen hundred, I believe.
Fifteen hundred.
I think it wasn't five.
I can't find it. I figured it'd be under Finance, but I don't see the fundraising policy.
Let me, let me do a little bit of looking, I'll see if I can find it here for you.
Sorry. And was that policy written to be?
It's a.
Specific or fundraising total?
A total, it's, it's under the 7,000, seventy-two thirty-five.
Oh, gifts.
Seventy-two thirty-five under fundraising.
Yes. Just FYI, we have two seventy-two.
I know, those, that's a kind of goofy thing.
I have a general question there, should fundraising be moved over and made a 6,000 policy under Finance? Given that the extracurricular.
I kind of feel like it should, I mean, in my opinion, that's where it makes sense for me, but.
I would agree with you on that.
Yeah, we can, there's nothing magical about that, we can, we can move it around.
I kind of think the same thing when it comes to the grants, gift grants or requests, that's a finance thing, you're, I suppose somebody could be asking us to bequeath us a couple acres, I suppose, but that's still a financial matter. Just food for thought there on that, Dr. Schaefer.
Sure.
All right, so you're looking at those and possibly you're changing those two, and when we're back in the next meeting.
Will do.
I have one last question, I guess, based upon what I read in the email. The people who attend gates take monies to get into basketball games, football games, plays, any other of those extracurriculars where they need to pay something, those are event workers. What, what do we pay event workers?
I'll say, it's going to depend, it's going very by the event. I think the different organizations are going to set that amount, what they're, what they're paying somebody to work an event. Sometimes it's going to be volunteer, sometimes it's going to be paid, I don't know, without checking specifically Mrs. Harvey, what we're paying typically for athletic event workers at middle school or high school. And it may, again, it may depend on the event, whether they're taking tickets, working concessions, what they're doing.
And as a, I guess, trying to understand how the terminology advisor in that email references event worker, but yeah, advisor, is that kind of like a consultant, too?
It'd be, yeah, really, really consulting.
So where do we have that kind of laid out and defined within our, all of our structure within our corporation? Because it seems to be something new that I've heard about.
Yeah, I don't know that we do. I think, well, in this case, in speaking with Mrs. Harvey, she was just looking to glean some knowledge that, in this case, Mrs. Nickel has from her past experience, to try to be more efficient, and felt like she needed to provide her some sort of compensation for that, but it's, this isn't likely to be an ongoing type of thing. Just trying to understand, as we work through this first season here, how we can be more efficient with our ordering, trying to eliminate waste, I think is a large piece of this, and just trying to glean some of that information that we can pass on to the rest of our staff here over time. Because once we get things a little more efficient and running, I don't think your ordering is going to change a lot as you work from, you know, sport to sport, season to season.
So yeah, that just seemed, that struck me as a little bit different than just a event as a gate worker to play or something. So again, there, within the specifics of, I'm sure you're going to, within reporting to us, that we had proceeds from gates related to this, but to me, then, we need to kind of understand what kind of hours we're paying out on that, from within that, any of those proceeds for any of those organizations. Because, you know, since one organization is doing it, who knows, you know, theater might want to try and get an advisor to how they're going to better promote making monies off of the theater and so forth. So I think accountability that wise would be, would be good.
I know that groups can work the concession stand and get something for their season, you know, like tennis can work it, theater can work it, basketball can work it.
And they don't actually pay those, they just give them credit
Yeah.
In their, their accounts.
But I would like clarification, because I think that changed this year. On that, I'll be honest, the concession stand problem is not a matter of waste, it's that we're not efficient, and the lines are too long, so people don't want to stand in them, especially at football games. We had carts out in the visitor side with basic needs with coolers, you'd be selling a lot more, and you wouldn't have waste, and so I feel like there's other ways to think about that. From a concession stand, from someone who's been there for a long time and watched the game a long. You can't go through the concession line, even if you left at the end of the second quarter, got there before end, and before halftime finished. Just telling you.
And I think those are some of the things they're looking at, too, is how, how do you make that better?
And again, I don't know how much monies are being spent on this new position, under the disguise of event workers, but seems like maybe reaching out, as we do with so many other things, corporation-wise, to try and find out what's going on and why, or if other districts have such, you know, their concessions and so forth profitable. We not only have the ones in the county, but we have, also have the cohort that seems to be like us, it seems like we could be reaching out and trying to get some information and glean from there.
Yeah, and I, I know Mrs. Harvey has done a little bit of that, because she shared with me that she did, so.
I know when we were in school, we, I don't know when, when this changed, but we had the, you had a fountain drink, that you had ten cents in, and now you're selling bottles, which I'm sure the profit margin didn't near, nearly the same as what we used to make off the ten cent Coke you're selling for three dollars.
Sure.
Things like that to look at, too, when trying to generate money. Maybe they are, hopefully they are.
Yeah, products and cost and all that, yeah.
Yeah, it's all.
Yeah. There's a, there's a lot to it, when you, when you really get down to it.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, next item on the agenda, School Board Policy Updates, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. There is, apologetically, a lot here, so I tried to break it up a little bit to make it a little bit easier to get our minds around. The first set of these policies, which starts with 5,200 student attendance, 0151 organizational meeting, and 6,420 teacher appreciation grant, those are really here tonight, disintended as a first read. What we're still doing is sort of cleaning up after the legislative session, because there are trickle-down policy changes that have to occur as a result of that. So there were, if you recall, I think it was a month ago, maybe two months ago, we made some changes to student attendance to get in basic compliance, because we were waiting on guidance to come out of the Department of Education on excused and unexcused absences for students. So that's why this one is back. There is a timeline change in organizational meetings. As you know, we generally meet before January 15th each year to do our board reorganization, have our Board of Finance. That timeline has been pushed out to 30 days now, instead of 15, after the beginning of the year. So it really gives you a little more flexibility in scheduling when that January meeting's going to be, because sometimes, depending on how a couple of those holidays fell, you're kind of squeezing to get in there, this will give a little bit more flexibility to do that. And then on teacher appreciation grant, the entire way that the teacher appreciation grant will be distributed, when it will be distributed, how it's to be distributed, is totally changed. So what the state has said is, you don't need to annually be renewing the same teacher appreciation grant policy you have, and in fact, you don't need to have one. They did say if you remove it from your policy, that they want you to archive it. I'm not sure why. So essentially, we don't need to have a teacher appreciation grant policy any longer. Ours would be defunct anyway, because of the new, new laws that have passed, ours would be meaningless. So that one, we can mothball, for lack of saying it a different way, because all of the, the guidance now is in statute on how those have to be distributed. And you don't have to have a policy for it, just because it's in statute. So those are the basic changes. I'm going to go back up to student attendance. Dr. Walker has led a lot of conversation with the building principals on this, as well as the certified directors, to look at how we're doing specific attendance on excused and unexcused absences in particular, that's what this big change was about. So as she has went through and edited this to make it compliant, it, the formatting had to be changed, so it was, it was just, it made a lot more sense to line everything out and then rewrite it. We're not making changes to everything in there, we're making changes to the excused, unexcused part, but because of all the changes that have occurred to state level, it makes a lot more sense to us to rewrite it and note where those changes are with the excused and unexcused. I'll let her talk a little bit about that piece of it in particular.
Yeah, so the policy you see is the same exact wording from our student handbook, so we just wanted everything to align with wording, with numbers, and as Dr. Schaefer mentioned, we've had a lot of conversation, we've looked at our data, not only with like groups, but our county groups as well, and felt like this change for us with changing and having the eight parent call-ins without documentation before those absences start to count as unexcused, will help sort of us lower the number of students we have that are chronically absent currently. So again, the, if you have documentation, all of those absences are still excused. Doctor's notes, dentist's notes, anything that would be excused before is still excused. This just puts a limit on the number of times that a parent can call in their child before you start getting unexcused absences, and then it's another 10 before there are sort of consequences, you know, and not expulsion anymore, but things like talking to Project Attend and things like that. So you're talking about 18 times that a parent would have to call in before you kind of get to that final point. There are some warning letters before that, but 18 total, we felt like was, was enough to be able to say at that point, we need to have conversations with you about, you know, attendance and, and attendance plan. So this just brings this policy in line with exactly what we've got in our student handbook currently.
So does that, those numbers of eight and 10, are in there? And that's what the state said, or that's what we chose?
So the state has decided the, the categories, and then we decide inside those categories what we consider excused and what we consider unexcused.
So then how did we arrive, how did we arrive at the number eight for the first part, and the number 10 for the second?
The state looks at 10% of the school year. If you miss that excused and unexcused absences, you're chronically absent, and so for us, 10% of the school year, 180 days is 18 days, so that's how we got to our 18 total.
So for the public, our state legislature believes that it's okay for a student to miss 10% of the school year, and not have an impact necessarily on the quality of their education. Just for clarity for the public.
Yeah, and the, as Dr. Walker said, that does coincide then with those 18 days for chronically absent. But we also felt as we worked through it, that we didn't know if it was reasonable to expect a parent to go get documentation every time a child is sick. So, you know, to help our parents, we wanted to provide them a reasonable number of days, thinking first semester, second semester, a reasonable number of days, that they would be able to excuse their child for being ill, without needing to, to get a direct certification from a doctor. So we tried to balance that with those eight days, and then came up with a, again, the total of 18, which is matched with the chronically absent.
Did you give thought to that, if those eight days start to become a pattern, for the day before, after Thanksgiving break, after Thanksgiving break, the day before Christmas break, the day after Christmas break, the day before spring break, the day after spring break, last day of school, first day of school? If that starts to become a pattern, did you consider having a caveat in there of the ability to essentially approach it with them?
I mean, we can always have those conversations, you know, with the principal, assistant principal, counselors are always tracking attendance, those are conversations they can have, but this way, you know, we, you know, like Dr. Schaefer mentioned, you know, I know as a parent, every time my kids are sick, they're not necessarily going to the doctor, and so it gives them sort of that window of, you know, normal opportunities. I will say we have some families who leave for, you know, extenuating, you know, they extend the weekend, and they're a couple days, or may leave early, so those will count towards those eight days, if they're calling in for other reasons, if there's no documentation there.
As we become more diverse, there will be other opportunities, special situations that arise as well.
Yeah.
With their traditions and holidays and.
Yes.
I guess I would also point out, that it seems like by the state legislature doing this, it seems to also contradict what we believe we should be doing to prepare the student for the world of tomorrow. Because once they get to the world of work, I think it is that you get to a point that the employer's going to be, have the freedom to say from this point on, we need doctor's notes every time.
There, there are procedural steps that start happening once they hit five days. So it's, it's not a free pass until you get 18 days, there are procedural required meetings with parents, letters of warning home, et cetera, that happen all the way through this process, once a student misses five days, regardless of the reason. So that safeguard is in there, and we will see how this goes. You know, it could be we come back next year and want to make some adjustments as we learn a little bit more. Right now, we're sort of. Right now, we're sort of relying on the, the good faith effort of our parents and of our students to be at school. We understand that the state does allow, there's quite a bit of flexibility here. But if we feel like in the future, we need to rein it in tighter on documentation or just days that we count as excused, we, we can do that as well.
Then how does that relate to the amount of time a student has to complete their makeup work for those absences?
They have the, the number of days that they're absent. They have that many number of days to make up the, make up the work.
So they decide to call in sick for three days they've got.
They have three days once they return.
Well, and at the high school, they have a new incentive. And so Carter was very excited to earn his gold pass. So he gets to exempt two finals because, and it's attendance and grades.
Exempt finals?
Two finals of his choice, which I remember Corley had that.
Do you agree with that as a parent that you really want to know the final educational outcome?
He, he works hard in the front end, it shouldn't matter on the final. He should already know it.
Thank you.
Next policy.
Hoping back across here. So those are presented first reading tonight. And then in the, the second group here, here we have policies that we read in August, back for a second reading and recommended approval for tonight. We have the policy on board member salary. And this policy sets, well, I shouldn't say that. The policy doesn't set anything. The policy itself doesn't declare any amounts. It simply would say that we're going to annually revisit how much and pass a resolution on what that amount will be for that year for board members. Right now, your policy only says that board members, by paying the full amount of the premium, could take, could take the, the health insurance. There's really nothing about compensation in there beyond that. So it's adding in suggested language from ISBA that would say that the board would annually during the reorganizational meeting, we would do a resolution to say what that amount will be for that year. Okay? That's all that policy does. And then the second policy would be our transfer students. And I did make one, there's one small change to this from what we looked at last month. The first part of this is the same and it declares that an employee, if you have a student who is a transfer, that is the son or daughter of an employee, in order to be considered in that category and to get priority status, that employee has to make at least eight thousand dollars as a regular employee or if they're only an extracurricular employee, they have to make at least three thousand dollars. And that was drafted in the, the policy, that's a legislative change last month. What we've also caught since then is there is a new change. Previously, you could not transfer solely for athletic reasons. Okay, that was state law in the past, it was IHSA rule, et cetera. That's all changed in this last legislative session. You can now transfer for athletic reasons.
For one year, one time, right?
You can do it by your eighth grade year and then you can do it once during your high school year. So you actually get two times, but only once during your high school career.
By the eighth grade year or by the end of the eighth grade year?
It would be by the end of the eighth grade year. So you really get two opportunities, but only once in high school. I don't personally like that rule change and maybe I'm just used to the old rule change. I know things change, but that, I have some concerns with that. But that is what current law is and our policy would need to reflect that. And then the last one, our updates to the bullying laws. And these essentially say, when you begin to investigate a bullying incident, the building principal, when they start to investigate it, they have another full day, but, but by the end of that next full day, they need to have communicated with the alleged bullier and the alleged victim. When they complete the investigation, they'll say that investigation takes three days to sort through everything. They have one more full day beyond that then to get back and, and inform the resolution to, again, the alleged victim and the bullier. That way, there's a beginning communication within twenty-four hours. There's an ending communication within twenty-four hours, once the investigation is completed. So those are just changes to that particular policy. And they, these are second reads on these. The only thing that's different there at all on those policies from last month is just taking out that you can't move for athletic reasons because now you can.
Now you can.
So my recommendation would be to approve policy on school board member salary, transfer students and bullying changes. If you want to approve the others on first reading, you certainly can, but I'm not expecting that tonight.
Okay, a motion to approve school board policies zero one four four dot one, board member salary, five one 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 eligibility of non-resident students and five six zero zero student discipline rules as presented. Still moved. Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsel. Any more discussion or are we good?
I guess I'm just on the, so looking at the current policy on school board salary that you have here, really what we're doing is taking out the bold print and replacing that with a deeper explanation of what you put.
Good question. What, if you look at the proposed page, the bold print is actually, that's the new language added in. The light print, that one sentence, that school board members may participate in the corporation's insurance program by paying the full amount of their premium. That's what your policy is now, that's it. So ISBA is recommending to put in language, the Board of Trustees by resolution shall annually determine the amount of salary and per diem each member will receive for services performed as board members, not to exceed the limitations established by Indiana law. That's the additional part.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of board member compensation, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. And again, this is the same policy. If the board would want to consider this further in terms of the compensation itself, I'd say that while considering the change in legislation and potential change to board compensation, the board can keep the current amounts, which are two thousand dollars annually, along with a hundred and fifty dollars per diem for regular meetings and seventy-five dollars for special meetings. Or you can consider the new maximum of fifty-two hundred dollars annually or any number, as long as it does not exceed the new maximum amount, which in our case would be fifty-two hundred dollars. Board members are certainly not overpaid for the responsibility that you do. But what I want to be clear is the, the hundred and fifty dollar per diem and the seventy-five dollars for special meetings, those you cannot change. You could take them down, but you can't take them up anymore. They're at the current max and those did not change in this legislative session. It's just the annual amount that they are giving board members the opportunity to make that change if you so choose to do so.
All right, motion to consider approval of school board, school board member compensation. Still moved. Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Comments, questions, discussion?
So just for clarity, that we're moving the base amount of two thousand dollars up to fifty-two hundred per board member, which is an increase of thirty-two hundred dollars. Or a total for five board members being fifty-two hundred, or thirty-two hundred times five, which is going to be sixteen thousand.
Yeah, and for clarity, this is, this is, policy is back, or I shouldn't say policy. This motion, this effort is back at board member request. I do not have a recommendation here on this. It's, it's simply for, for you as a board to figure out.
Based on what the state law put out.
Correct, those would be your maximums. You're, you're currently at the two thousand dollar maximum. The new maximum could go up to fifty-two hundred as it is right now. Now again, if beginning teacher pay changes, you know, here later this fall, that could adjust slightly.
Right.
But that's, that's, those, that's the range you're looking in right now.
But that, once you complete teacher raises for this year, we're approving fifty-two hundred, teacher raises, if the beginning teacher raise changes in November to say fifty-three thousand, it's not going to change our fifty-two hundred automatically.
Not automatically.
I want people to understand, it still has to come back.
That's correct.
For another, and since we already done this once, it really can't come back again until we get into twenty-six because it's saying annually.
I guess I'm confused. Why wouldn't we just have it that, that board pay is ten percent of the lowest paid teacher in the corporation? And leave it at that instead of having to come back every year and do it?
You could. I mean, you, I, I don't, I don't see a reason you couldn't do that.
I guess we can worry about that in January, but for tonight, we'll just go ahead with what we got here.
I said consider, so someone needs to tell me a number.
Well, I think we.
Oh, I thought we did.
I thought you guys made the motion to.
I thought it was.
To move it from two thousand to fifty-two hundred.
Second.
I think the, I think the motion was to consider an increase if I remember correctly.
It was just to consider an increase. It was not a specific amount. All right, so Mr. Bryant has made a motion to increase school board pay to fifty-two hundred. And Mr. Hemsel has seconded.
Yes.
Comments, questions? Now, I have a comment. Do y'all realize that school board pay comes out of the operations fund?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is the amount that we're talking about trying to decrease expenses in.
Correct.
In a, in a timeframe that we don't know what's going to hit the operations fund.
Correct. And I guess I haven't heard you bring that up. Dr. Schaefer, I'd like to thank you for sending me the link to the major and secondary areas in the operations fund that you would look to cut from. And it was nice to get the areas and the totals for each of those areas. But now if you could send me the spreadsheet that itemizes those totals, that's what I was looking for and that would be helpful for me to understand then. If you're running into problems, then maybe we need to step back and readdress this down the road. But again, until I get a little better understanding, to address your comment, this is Cherry. I think we do quite a bit of work to try and vet through some of the information that we're being provided.
Yeah, I do too.
I just think it's a terrible time to give ourselves a raise out of a fund that we're still trying to narrow down the expenses in.
There's other places to take the money away from too.
Well, I think you can revisit it in January. All right. Any other comments?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. That passes three to one, Ms. Penny. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of surplus obsolete equipment, Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. Here before you this evening, we just have a couple of chairs here from the middle school that have served their purpose. They are all worn down or broken, there's actually four of them. So I am requesting the board's permission that we would go ahead and get rid of those chairs.
All right. Motion to approve the surplus obsolete equipment as presented. Still moved. Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, superintendent's report, Dr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Yeah, about three quick areas to hit this evening. First of all, I want to report to you on our net assessed value. Statutorily, we are to have received our certified net assessed values by August first. We have still not received these at this point. Some counties have, some counties haven't, and just asking around. It's making it difficult to fully assess our operations budget, our debt service budget, and even full bargaining position due to the transfer that, you know, occurs through the year. So we are waiting eagerly to get those certified net assessed values, but we don't have them yet. We'll let you know when we do receive those.
You think in the next week or two or?
Honestly, we have no idea.
Have you touched base with the government center to ask the question about when the projection is?
We haven't asked. I mean, they, they have to turn it out. We can ask, but I don't think that's going to change the.
I wasn't asking you. Say again, I'm asking you if you have.
No, we have not.
I, I did reach out to the DLGF just to see if they had heard anything because that's ultimately where it is submitted is to the DLGF. And they had said, last they had heard, they were working on their TIF neutralization. And once they got that finalized, that hopefully it would be submitted. But that was probably two weeks ago.
So that, so that information isn't calculated at the local government center here in Danville?
It is, yes, it's at the assessor's office.
Have any other counties around, around us received yours?
There's several. Well, there's several that have and there's several that have not.
Yeah, I don't, we're not, we're not the first or we're not the last. We're, we're, like many of us, we're across the state, we're still waiting. Wanted to give you a little bit of an update from the recent redevelopment commission and town council joint retreat, which was held on September third. Couple of the areas we talked about, one where, and this was kind of news to us, that the town has recently met with D.R. Horton and also N.DOT, had some more discussions. And the discussion is about where you're way out onto US thirty-six and then think about going across there. There's no way to go across there right now, but to get a cut in on the other side so the road would go on through. It sounds like in their most recent discussions that there is now from N.DOT more likelihood of that occurring. And pardon?
There's stoplight then?
Well, that they're talking, they're talking about potential of lights. We don't know what that looks like, or even possibly around about in that area. So that's something for us just to kind of keep our ear open to and see what transpires with that. They're, I think, hoping to get some sort of ten-year covenant or agreement to develop and that would, would be desired. And they're also looking at a potential, this is something for us to be more aware of. As you would come onto our property off of thirty-six, the potential of getting a cut in, once you get behind, if you're coming, you know, this way, you're moving south. Once you get to the area behind Casey's, or think about behind La Raa, of having a cut in there and my words, not theirs, is kind of a utility road through there. So you could be able to come in and go either way in behind those. I think there's another company, it's potentially a small company, potentially looking at locating in behind where Casey's is. There is a little bit of ground back there. That would be something for us to stay attuned to. I can see some advantages in that and I can see some disadvantages in that at certain times with traffic flow. I think, in my thinking, it will come down to how that intersection gets improved there. If there becomes a four-way intersection with US thirty-six both ways and then be able to go across there onto the current D.R. Horton property. So again, just something I wanted you to be aware of as a board. I think these things are a little, you know, a little further down the road here, of course, but conversations may continue here, you know, over the next few months about that. There was some east side development discussion, when I say east side, east of Danville off of US thirty-six. There were letters presented recently from Senator Clark and Representative Thompson for the right end, right of way west of Walmart. So think of it, if you're headed this way from the, the light at Walmart, you're headed this way down thirty-six to get a right in and right out off of there, would open up that development property out along there. We're understanding the property owner is interested in development at this point. And there, there needs to be a major study done first on that to see what that would look like. A little bit of discussion about Deesels, what was Deesels. That property has been purchased. I think a lot of people are aware of that here in the community. But trying to think about how that development of that property can, can be support, excuse me, be supported through an economic development loan. And that would look like something where the town perhaps loans out on that and the RDC could reimburse the town for some other projects to help take care of some of that same cost. The RDC, it's not something they can pay for directly. The town can pay for, the RDC can take care of some other town costs in it. That kind of comes out in the wash, if you will. So that's, that's some discussion that's happening. The RDC has recently hired Chris Hamm with HWC Engineering. And he's being charged by the Redevelopment Commission to develop an economic development strategy implementation plan around the airport area. We're trying to think of ways to encourage what we would think of as sort of that three percent or industrial, light industrial, not heavy industrial, light industrial development out there, which would help the tax base tremendously, would help the, the overall growth of the town. And also, long-term, provide some balance in our, getting louder in here. Provide some balance in our, our tax base. We're very heavy one percent right now, you know, followed by two percent and pretty light on three percent in terms of the tax base. So we're trying to work through some ways to encourage that type of development coming up with this. Coming up with a strategic plan is, is the first step in that. A little bit of update on the Lincoln Street update. The Traffic Solutions Committee has been ongoing. Their legal team is working with Reedy Associates on the funding process. And what I'm referring to specifically is there is a town plan, again, as you come down the hill out there on US thirty-six from Walmart, to potentially come down that hill and take a, almost call a Michigan left turn, or think about the left turn at Costco. So you come down the hill, left turn over into that median and be able to cross across and then build the road out of Lincoln Extended, which would come in behind where Kroger is and build that road on through. That road then would come down Lincoln, eventually come right through, right through here. Now, this is a long-term type of project. I think we're probably at least six to seven years away from seeing that even begin to come to fruition. It would involve a series of roundabouts, one at Blake Street, right there, Cartersburg Road and Blake Street was sort of that five-cornered. So looking at potential roundabout there, looking at a potential roundabout here at Lincoln and Mackey and looking at a potential roundabout right there by the Kroger intersection now. So it would start on the east end, what they have projected now, and move this way over time. And then redeveloping all that as it would move through town. I, I do think that would help with some traffic flow around town during busy times. I am concerned about the amount of traffic it would push past our schools in the morning and in the, in the late afternoon. That does concern me, so I've expressed those concerns at, at various meetings. But also encouraged too, that if that's the only plan that can be developed and it's the best plan that can be developed, that sidewalking, streeting, lighting, curbing needs to be very appropriate and very well-built to handle pedestrian traffic safely through these areas. But again, just catching up on that a little bit. And lastly, I want to talk about school construction briefly. Our classroom renovations continue in the east wing of the high school. That's, continues in those humanities areas that were foreign language mass, some of those classrooms right now. We're also continuing work in our current tech ed classrooms, which was Mr. Foster's area previously. That's under renovation and should be nearing completion around sometime in November. The band acquired new spaces where the old pool was. Those will also be nearing completion here at the end of the semester. And that all will be turned over by the, by the semester, first semester or second semester this year. New art rooms and the all- ed spaces are under construction with the foundations and slab on-grade concrete ongoing out in front of the old temporary high school entrance, which is old entrance seventeen, that's ongoing right now. Also, the pool work continues with tiling and bleacher work ongoing in there. The weight room, entrance twenty-three, which is old entrance thirteen there by the memorial bell. And the athletic locker rooms are all now turned over to us. With a little, little bit of finishing work happening, but it's, it's pretty minor at this point. Although the polished concrete floor of the locker room building is rejected due to poor joints and sediments in the finish. It's usable, it's not what we want. Our architect has rejected that through the punchless process and we're going to expect that that be refinished this summer, sometime after, after the football season's over, they get in and rework that. It is not, it is not acceptable and it's something you look at. Again, it's, you know, structurally sound, but the appearance of it, the aesthetics of it, and I think maybe the long-term care of it are not what it needs to be. So that's going to need to be reworked after the season. The transportation project is underway with light pole bases. I think those are finished. Foundations are ongoing with the concrete flat work about to begin soon, as soon as the foundations are finished. And then the addition to the administration building project will have bids opened on October seventh. That's the date for bid opening. So we'll have a pre-bid meeting, all the information will be posted out for bidders and then opening will happen on October seventh. So just a kind of a quick overview for you there.
I have a question for you on transportation, kind of old business that I'm kind of wondering about that. Again, it's my understanding from some of the information you provided with your weekly update, transportation facility water line is going to be a two-inch meter.
Yes.
And so that, I think, brings the cost down considerably from what we approved in July from a hundred and fifty thousand down closer to forty-five or fifty thousand.
Yeah, we, we received, and we did receive, we got a hundred and five thousand dollar reimbursement check back. The solution on that will be still a three-inch line going in. And that will be metered down to a two-inch around the meter, so it'll be a two-inch meter. Then it'll still be, I think, some three-inch piping capacity inside. And that way, if in the future, you know, maybe they put a different bus wash in or something like that, that has higher demand or they add on to the building, you'd be able to swap out the meter without having to swap out all of the pipe work to get that back up to a three-inch. So it is a good compromise, I think everybody worked out. Appreciate the, the feedback from the board to help us with that savings and it, it has been refunded.
So that's, my final question is that's about a hundred and five thousand dollar savings or will be approved in July, given the fact that we approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure. Shouldn't there be something in old business asking us to approve an amended expenditure that? Because right now, you got public record shows us that we approved a hundred and fifty thousand at a board meeting, but we really don't have anything public record-wise acknowledging that really what we should have, what we're finally approving is a forty-five thousand dollar expenditure and that we're approving and you got that money coming back as a refund. I understand it's a refund, but still seems like there should be a public record at a board meeting that kind of shows that money coming back in and the board acknowledging that.
I'll, good question, I'll need to go back and check because I, I need to see how, what approval was given there specifically by the board for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll take a look and see.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are you done, Dr. Schaefer?
I am, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is announcements. The homecoming football game will be Friday, September twenty-sixth. We will hold our twenty-twenty-six budget hearing here in the boardroom on October first at five-thirty. We will have our staff appreciation dinner on Friday, October third from five PM to seven PM, I believe that is in the high school cafeteria.
It is, yes.
At our next school board meeting will be on Monday, October thirteenth, here in the boardroom at the middle school. I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.